Okay, I'll call this meeting over. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan here. Green here. LaFleur here. Ms. Stravich here. Ricks here. Warren here. Yark here.
Let's see, everybody's here and I approve the minutes for the council quarterly round table that was held on July 25th. Motion in order.
Motion.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on those minutes? Be not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We also have the regular meeting minutes of August 1st. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda. If anybody'd like to speak to the city council that's not on the agenda, please do so by coming up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Harvey. My address is 35505 Diane Lane, you're in Richmond. And so, just wanted to find out, maybe something simple, but, you know, why are we not allowed to have meters for water? I will tell you that, you know, I've been here since 2007 and, you know, the time comes that it's to water the lawns and the gardens and I keep my lawn green and I pay for it. You know, the term around here in Richmond is it's liquid gold and, you know, I also see a lot of neighbors that truly don't water their lawns and they say that's the reason why, man, they've got brown lawns and, you know, to beautify the city, I just, I really don't understand why. I hear of the discount that's offered, but with 2,200 homes, I don't understand why, for the residents, why we just don't offer that as an option and we can pay for the permit and have it licensed and so on and so forth, so that when we get that bill and I see a $210 water bill and a $200 sewage, I get frustrated and, you know, I'm like, well, I know it's not all going to the sewer, it's going into my lawn. So, I just wanted to ask, you know, what is the reason why we don't, other than maybe why it's just hasn't been looked at, so, or maybe it has.
It's a very, I don't want to say it's a complicated answer, but it's a, can you respond to that simply?
Sure, it's a long answer to a short question.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to send that out and I can't recall if I emailed you some information on that once before. I believe you've talked here at City Hall, but maybe I'm...
I called, but I haven't.
Most communities handle the second meter issue a number of ways. Some communities don't allow second meters and they also don't have the summer sewer rate. Some communities such as Richmond offer the summer sewer rate to all residents and then some allow the second meter. I think in the past, when we did examine this issue, there was a number of factors that went into the decision on our policy, the way it currently sits, which is the fact that there was some issues with the metering and how our computer system handled that. I'm not sure those are still issues, but at the time, we also looked at, if you do the second meter, you more than likely don't allow the summer sewer rate. And so, by doing that, only the people that could afford to put in the second meter would get the benefit of the watering discount, so to speak. It also increases the maintenance on the system a little bit and it also, you'd normally have to put in a inspection program so that every couple of years, you go out and inspect that second meter to make sure people haven't plumbed other things into it. So, there was, I think, a number of factors and given the amount of time or some chance to put some information together, I can and make sure to get that out to Mr. Harvey and the council.
And I would, you know, back the city manager up. We have looked at this numerous, numerous times over the almost 21 years that I've been on city council and it's always come down to, it just doesn't make sense for the city of Richmond to go that direction for many, many, many different reasons. So, I think it's a good idea if the city manager can put something in writing that kind of covers all the reasons that we have decided to go that direction. That's about the best we can do for you.
So, I mean, understanding that with, you know, under, like, year over year, how I think technology, you know, gets better and better and so, the last time you looked at that or maybe put that through a process or you've reviewed it, has the same thing, the same things come up or due to technology and how things have evolved, are things gotten better so that maybe the city's not going to incur that? Because I understand that everyone gets the discount, but, you know, as I've brought it up and talked to neighbors and just people here in the town, it just seems to be that, oh, well, that's never going to change. And I'm like, well, you know, well, why not? I mean, 10 years ago, I can maybe understand, hey, 10 years ago, it was one way. Well, it's 10 years later, it's going to be 2017 to think of how meters are today and the technology and things of that nature, so.
And I think that's why the mayor's asking for me to put some more information together. Maybe things have changed. I don't think there was any one particular reason, there was a number of...
It was a cumulative effect on the whole...
And so, certainly maybe that particular issue may not be as big of an issue as it used to be, but I can certainly put that information together and get it out to yourself and to the council.
So, one last question and I appreciate your time. You know, so, in the event that 10% or 20% of us said, hey, we would like to have a meter, then we would not receive the summer discount. I, maybe I'm trying to hit the easy button here.
Yeah.
You know, but to say that I would be, you know, that those families would not have that discount and we would have the meter, then you would only be inspecting those homes that have meters or requested the permits to do so.
And certainly council can, and different communities can do everything however they want, however, at least in my experience in talking to other cities, typically you do one or the other, but not both because it then affects the water and sewer fund to too great of an extent.
Okay. Well, okay, well, then I guess I'll take a look at, I mean, I'm looking at an answer that supports not having a meter.
Sure.
But, I mean, I understand, I mean, if there's anything that, I don't know, can be done or to be looked at again and put it through just to see, but it's still, it's one of those things that I've got a $430 water bill, my one neighbor's got a $400, and we are all in the same boat that we're just, you know, we don't like it and we just see that it's going to sewage and we know that there's no sewage, you know, but the city gets that money, so, we'd rather have it in our pockets and keep our lawns green and other than just saying, forget it and just have them turn brown.
Yeah. It wasn't done, the decision over the years has not been taken lightly. You know, it all affects all of us too, we're all homeowners too.
Right.
So, we understand, you know, the hardship that it puts on people that do do the watering. But, again, we need, it is such a huge, complex amount of information that affects water rates and everything else. We need to, there's no short answer.
Sure.
You know, to satisfy you and I think it's been a few years since we've looked at it. I can't remember the last time, maybe four years ago?
I think the question has been raised from summer to summer. The last time we actually took a look at it, I believe Darwin was still here, so probably over 10 years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I mean, where we actually got information, sat down and delved in into the issue.
Yeah.
So, you say there's a chance.
Well, it's tiny then, probably.
Oh, yeah. Tell me there's a chance. I have the same one. Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
I would say it'll be on a future agenda, it's been that long.
Yeah.
It's something the city manager...
Or even maybe a quarterly or however council wants to...
Yeah. We have quarterly workshops also where we can dive into some of this stuff, much deeper than what we do at a city council meeting, like a workshop. And it's open to the public.
Okay.
So, I'm sure that will be coming up in the next few months, that you'll be able to have time to get all that back together again. Like I say, technology has changed, especially since we moved over here. A lot of our stuff is updated and, you know, there may be other possibilities today that there weren't.
Well, great, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Adoption of agenda, any change?
John?
No changes.
City council, any changes? No? Motion to accept the agenda as presented, would be in order.
So, moved.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Be not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported? There's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have four this evening. The first one being consideration of the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 138-2 Pet Cemetery. Mr. City Manager.
City council is scheduled to consider giving second reading and adopt ordinance 138-2, the Richmond Pet Cemetery Ordinance. This ordinance will establish an area of the Richmond Cemetery for use as a pet cemetery and provide for the establishment of rules and regulations, the process for setting and collecting charges and fees, and provide procedures for the enforcement of this ordinance. Council gave introduction and first reading at your July 18th meeting. The Public Service Director, Jim Gutsinger, has put together a draft ordinance that we've tweaked over the last year and as well as different information sheets that are in your packet and the overall cost to the city to set up and get going on the pet cemetery is roughly $5,150.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to give second reading and adopt ordinance 138-2, the Richmond Pet Cemetery Ordinance.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion. Mr. City Manager, you've received nothing, no communications from the public.
I received one phone call from a local business owner that expressed what she felt is a need in the community based on how many people go to her business looking for things, memorial-type objects for their pets. Other than that, I have not received any other public comments on it.
Okay. And we did delay this, if I remember correctly, didn't we delay this meeting? So, I gave plenty of time for any response to the...
And there was an article in the paper as well. I kept checking that article and I did not see, at least the first week or so, I didn't see any comments posted on the article either.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may say something, the folks that commented that were concerned, once I showed them the photograph that the city manager sent, they, oh, that makes so much sense. So, they were in support of it and so am I.
Very good. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
As I appreciate that we did make this a particularly longer period between public hearings to allow for public comment and having not heard any concerns, I think we should go forward with this.
Anybody else? The audience, any audience comments on this?
Dean Roberts, 34836 Quail Trail. I'm just glad it's finally coming to fruition and being decided. I am in complete favor of this, my neighbors, a lot of people I know at the north end of town, their pets are their second kids and I really think it would be utilized, plus the fact that Mr. Fidelum put a lot of his personal time and effort into this. I just think it'd be a great service that we can offer the citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Item number two, consideration of special event request, Chamber of Commerce Fall Decorating and Scarecrow Contest. Mr. City Manager.
City council is scheduled to consider approving the request from the Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce for their fall decorating scarecrow contest, as well as the use of the Trailhead Park on October 15th from 9:00 to noon for a voting event on that. They've done both the scarecrow contest and that Saturday voting event for a number of years now and everything has gone well. They also are on the next Tifa agenda. Tifa in the past has sponsored a portion of the cost of the hay bales and corn stocks and so they'll be going to them at their meeting, I believe, next week. Their Saturday event will also feature cider and donuts, as well as through the McComb Conservation District, a bulb pickup. You, I believe, order the bulbs or little pine tree seedlings through the Conservation District, but you're able to pick them up here at Richmond. And the executive director, Jill Albin, is here if you have any questions.
Jill, would you like to make comments?
No, I always appreciate your consideration on this. This'll be the fourth year for this event and I have taken the city name off of the flyer this year, so it's just the Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce that's sponsoring it. As far as the bulb pickup, what we are doing is what the McComb Conservation District used to do when they had the bulb and tree sale, but we're going to downsize it, you know, considerably because my board has expressed concern that all of our yards are going to look really good if we don't get rid of all the bulbs and trees. So, anyway, we've downsized it and we're also going to...
Jill, can I hold you there? In other words, these aren't orders being picked up?
They're going to be picked up.
Okay, so, at what point do people order then?
We just got our flyer done and we're going to put it up online and then our orders will be done by the 23rd of September.
Oh, okay.
And we will package and go...
People will come and pick up at that time?
Right, and these are not full tree. These are just seedlings.
She's putting the two events together.
Yeah. Seedlings, yeah.
I had that explained to me. This has been a pretty good event. We have, we're planning on 100 bales of straw and 100 bunches of corn stocks. We plan on putting it out on the 30th of September, which is a Friday. I do have somebody who has a flatbed and everything, but if possible, we can get a couple of people to help throw those things around as I'm kind of getting out of that at this point. But, we'll be tying all that up and then the decorating can start the weekend of the 1st of October. Everything should be done and down by the 5th of November and if there's any residuals, I know last year, we had someone who wanted the bales of straw and that was great and they picked the majority of that up, but I may have the city assist if I have any things straggling because otherwise it ends up at my house, there's a big pile, so...
Well, that's where the city was going to take it.
Probably, yeah. But, I'm looking forward, you know, to good things with that, so.
November 5th.
Any questions at this point?
I have a question.
Question?
Yes, I have a question. Was the date November 5th for the pickup because that was a Saturday or...
For them to take their scarecrows down?
Yes.
Pretty much because it was a Saturday. I didn't really want to do it before Halloween.
And that's on a Monday this year?
Right.
Okay.
If that's an issue, we can, you know, move it. I just was trying to go, is there something that happens on the 5th?
No, I think last year, there was an issue where somebody came and took the hay bales and they just threw the scarecrows...
All the dead bodies.
Down on the ground and a lot of places on Main Street driving by, it looked like a dead body laying there. And so, more kind of possibly diligence through the chamber to the people volunteering to do the scarecrows that, hey, you do need to take your scarecrow down on a certain date, I guess. That was the, I believe the concern that...
Yes.
Counselor Green was...
They will, they will be advised that their scarecrow has to come down by the 5th. I will personally drive around with my son's pickup and if there are any dead bodies in the roadway that are really just stuffed, I'll make sure they're out of the way.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any other questions? Thank you, Jill. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce for the fall decorating contest and the use of the Trailhead Park on Saturday, October 15th, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with the requirement, and this is not on your list, that the chamber ensures the removal and will completely take care of everything by November 5th. That, well, that's my motion.
Now, I have a discussion with the public.
That's my motion.
Okay. Would you restate that, please? Just the, what you are adding to the motion.
With the requirement that the chamber ensures the removal of the displays by, I was going to say a date determinant, but she said November 5th, so November 5th, that the chamber will remove everything by November 5th. So, with the requirement that the chamber ensures the removal of displays by November
Is there support?
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion.
And I have something, Mr. Mayor. So, the reason I am putting that in is because I want the chamber, not my DPW or anybody else. The chamber has to remove everything by November 5th.
And my concern is that the chamber...
Up, 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 up.
So, I'm...
We're not having public comment. I would hope that you do not do that.
Okay. Why I am putting this...
It's at the table at this point.
Why I'm doing that is because last year, it was a mess and it is a great event and I love this event, my family loves this event, I have lots of friends that participate in it and businesses. However, after Halloween, it looks really ragged and then when it is all discombobulated, things are ripped apart, it becomes a mess. There is hay everywhere, it needs to be cleaned up and this is a chamber event and it needs to be cleaned up by the chamber.
Okay. So, my question to you is, the request is very clear that help from the DPW in the letter, so you are saying the DPW should not help in any way, shape, or form to clean up?
Well, you know what, that is not my job to determine. I would, as...
No, no, you're making a motion to direct the city manager to not allow...
No.
You're saying that if I, I don't have your motion in writing, Jamie, which I should have...
I'm sorry.
According to our rules, but...
The motion was just that, I didn't say, it was that the chamber ensures that it's done by November 5th. So, it's not saying that the DPW, John Moore is in charge of the DPW. I'm just saying that the chamber ensures that if the city wants to participate, they will participate. If they don't, they don't have to, but it's the chamber's responsibility that by November 5th, it is done. So, I, my personal opinion is I don't believe the DPW needs to be cleaning this up, but that's just my personal opinion.
Because I thought that's how you started this off, was that you didn't want DPW involved in cleanup.
No.
But, okay, so, it's not precluding the request in the letter for help when needed for the cleanup, which was stated earlier by the director? Okay. Okay. And... Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Make that very clear, then, everything is to be cleaned up by November 5th.
Correct.
Which is basically stated anyhow.
And I guess, can I just kind of get a clarification on, in the past, we've had a couple guys go out and assist them in the placement off the flatbed trailer of the hay bales and corn stocks at the light poles the day of delivery. Is that, does the motion preclude DPW from helping in that?
No, they're...
No, it does. My point was...
And I just kind of, I thought that's what you were clarifying, but I just want to make sure that DPW can assist with the placement of the corn stocks and hay bales the day...
And DPW, that's, it was just for the, that the chamber is responsible by November 5th. If the DPW chooses whatever you decide to do with your employee, that is, that is your job, whatever you guys want to do with that. My was just that by November 5th, the chamber needs to make sure it's done.
Which council just confirmed, so, the discussion from the city manager, so you have very, very clear, very, very clear, is there consensus on council that the city manager can use city employees if needed?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's consensus, so it's very, very clear. Okay? Okay.
They've done a great job in the past.
Pardon me?
They've done a great job in the past.
Yes, they have. Yep.
And they don't work well together with chamber.
Okay, anything else? Moving on, item number three, consideration of purchase of a service body for the DPW. Mr. City Manager.
The current budget includes $30,000 for the purchase of a half-ton standard duty pit and a service body for one of our other trucks, a 2012 GMC. Recently, council approved the purchase of the half-ton truck in the amount of $21,596 and now Jim Gutsinger, our Public Service Director, has brought back the proposals for the service body for the 2012 GMC. The low quote was from Canfield Equipment out of Warren in the amount of $7,432.
Thank you, sir. Jim, was there anything that you wanted to say before motion?
No.
Okay. Let you off easy tonight. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the purchase of Napfeed 600 Series service body from Canfield Equipment with the expense of $7,432 charged to the line item 404-442-981 Vehicle Purchases Public Works DPW Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Question for you, Jim?
Sure.
Finding unusual that a company makes the body and there's another company that can sell it cheaper than the company that makes it?
Well, Naphide and Flint, I don't, that just may be their company name, I'm sure they're, they may or may not be directly related to Naphide that makes it. That's just the way it is. We've ordered it from Naphide and Flint, the last one or two, we've actually gotten it from there, but they were significantly higher, so that's why we went with the other option.
Yeah. I think it is the same company because we've dealt with them at the county.
Okay.
I just found it really unusual that somebody can, it is, happens for athletes, in other words, is my concern.
It's the exact same piece of equipment, yeah, or truck body.
Any other comments? Audience participation? Back to the table?
It will fix one of our trucks that does have it done, so...
Absolutely. No, this, we went through this in the workshop setting and it makes perfect sense to do it this way. Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of board appointments. Mr. City Manager.
There are two board appointments tonight for your consideration. We received an application from Lori Ricks for reappointment to the Cable Commission and an application from Kathy Oswald for appointment to the EDC.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the three-year term for the Cable Commission?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Lori Ricks to the Cable Commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of 6/30/2019.
Support. What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
Just like to thank her for her service. I mean, she does a great job, I, she keeps that cable commission running. Thank her.
How long's she been on, Tim?
Too long. We don't talk about cable board at home. No, no, she's a big supporter of it and my wife's very opinionated and she got on this board when, before, well, God, it must be before I even got on.
Prior to 95, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because couldn't be appointed while I've been on council, I've been on council since 95.
Correct.
So, she's been on there for a few years now, yeah. Prior to that was Parks and Recreation. She's probably got more time with the city than I do, actually. Okay. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. I'd like you to confirm my appointment of Kathy Oswald to the EDC. to the EDC. Kathy had served with us on Planning Commission for a number of years, and did a very nice job there. She is willing to fill one of those vacancies on the EDC if council will confirm the appointment. Is there a motion?
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kathy Oswald to the EDC to fill a vacant term with an expiration date of, I'm sorry.
It's not there.
Seven years.
What would the...
Yeah, 18 or 19.
Seven, one, nineteen?
Seven, one, eighteen or eighteen, nineteen.
Do we know what the date would be?
Six, thirty.
There's two vacancies, so either one, I would do the 19.
Yeah, yeah, we'll give her the extra year.
As long as she's willing, that's, yeah.
We always get the longest.
Uh-huh, yeah. So it'd be July 1 of 2019, Joe?
Got it.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, was there support?
Support.
Support. Discussion?
Thank you all.
Yes, absolutely. Audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. All right, that's our items for consideration this evening. We move on to city manager's comments. Sir?
Just, our construction projects keep going along. I know they're starting to do some work at the tennis courts on the fencing. Last week, they were doing, finishing up the drilling, coring for the fence posts, and this week, they're starting on the actual fence post and fencing. Hopefully get that done this week, and possibly even painting next week.
Very good. City council's comments. Dennis?
Just wanted to remind everybody, fall sports are starting at schools, and get out and support like usual, and hopefully everything goes good for all the teams.
Very good. Looking forward to it. Jeffrey?
Yes, one, I look forward to the information, having another discussion on the second meter, something we've discussed over the years, but I think this council's always been responsive to people's concerns and to have serious discussion when comments are brought. And I know we've discussed it before, but as new information comes, we'll discuss it again.
Yep.
Also, I want to thank everyone who came out and voted, particularly all those people that voted for me. And I appreciate the support that I enjoyed from the city of Richmond voters.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Which we are very happy that you will be running in November, and hopefully serving us well in Lansing come January. Would that, January 1, or?
Yep.
Is it January 1? Okay, okay. Yeah, looking forward to it.
I'm hopeful.
We will have a pipeline to Lansing this way. Will you take the blame for things, too? You're gonna have two different numbers, like a yay and a nay, or?
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Like on CNN, if you wanna complain, it's this one. If you're for, go with this one.
Exactly, yeah.
No, well, I hope to be, you know, be a statesman and do what I've done for Richmond, and, you know, take people's concerns, and we'll take the blame for the things I did wrong, and, you know, just be there either way to stand behind it.
Do a good job for us. I know you will. Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jamie?
Nothing, sir.
Dennis?
Dennis.
Michael?
I would concur, just with all the comments that were made, and congratulations to Councilor Jeff Yarck for his successful primary run, and encourage everybody to get out and vote in November.
Very good. Moving on, today being the 15th of August, we have North Recycling will be on the 16th. The 23rd will be South Recycling. We also have, I believe it's the last concert of the season.
It is.
The summer concert, put on by senior helpers, will be at 7 o'clock at BB Park on the 18th, and that is at the Pavilion in BB Park, last summer concert. We appreciate them bringing the three concerts to the city. Very nice of them. The 23rd of August, I don't have a lot of information on it, but it's the Parket Family Fun Night that starts at 6 o'clock at BB Park, I assume.
Correct. It's Monsters Inc. It's the flyer just below.
Oh, it is being, oh, here. Okay. Monsters University?
Yes.
It's an outdoor concert, kids' activities, giveaways, and the under-the-stars screening of Monster University. Any questions? Maybe the camera can get ahold of that. Any questions, call Parks and Rec at 727-3064, and that's gonna be on the 23rd of August at 6 o'clock. Tifa will be meeting on the 24th here at City Hall at 7 o'clock, and there is a special streetscape meeting on August 30th, Tuesday, August 30th, right here at City Hall. Our next regular scheduled council meeting will be on a Tuesday due to Labor Day. It'll be at 7 o'clock. We'll back to our fall/winter hours on September 6. It will be held at the Schoolhouse at the Historic Park in Bailey Park. There'll also be a 7 o'clock Recreation Board meeting on the same night here at City Hall. And also, that's the first day of school, is the 6th. A lot going on on the 6th. So is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar this evening? Sounds like things are going well in the community. You know, there's been a lot of things going on all summer long. We're winding down. Festival's coming in three weeks. They'll pick things back up again for a little while, but I think we had a good summer here in Richmond, and we made some changes that we talked about we wanted to make, and some of them that aren't done yet are getting done, and we're starting to work on some other stuff. So things are going well. Things are doing very well. So, proud to be here with all of you. Moving on, there is no closed session. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? Be not? Motion adjourned would be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being here.